Okay, we're live. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and begin. So this is strategic plan number four update. And we will actually go through a few slides and obviously stop me if you have any questions. And then we'll get to all the information we want to share. And I may go back and forth on the slides since some of the notes are not there on the screen, but not on the screen, so we'll go ahead with that. So just a reminder that our strategic priorities, the one is student achievement. Of course, seeing different data that we give you all the time, there's a lot of great things happening, but we always have room for improvement and we'll continue to work on that. Number two, recruitment and retention, we'll talk about that a little bit more later. Some of the things that we did to get to the point where we're at. And we are close to our ADM final count. And I will tell you that we're going to be really, really close to what we were last year. And obviously knowing a lot of different things, there has been decline across the county. And so it's good to know that we're back on track with that.
It'll be similar to what it was fall was.
Our fall was, yes. Most of it will try to compare apples to apples. Of course, typically we have an increase from fall to spring. But it looks like it'll be about the same. A lot of different scenarios with that. And then, of course, financial. Chris does a great job of all those and you will approve the budget tonight. We're recommending the budget there tonight, so things will look pretty well there. And of course, priority number four, facilities and technologies, really what we're talking about the most here. And so provide safe and efficient learning environments. And I do want to read the measurable goal that was presented when we started this in 2019. And that is to optimize utilization and determine feasibility of current facilities or other possibilities. And so really, when that was written, we didn't really know what the other possibilities might be. But those are the things that we're looking at, whether it's a current facilities or other possibilities. And that's what we'll be talking about tonight also. So wanted to give a little brief history. I think this is really neat, too. And if the people, if anybody's online watching this, we do have the pictures of all of the board members on the wall. And it's interesting to note that July 1st of 1959 is when MSD became a corporation. And you can see 1962 is when Southwood and Northfield opened. And you can see where all of those township schools came together. And then, of course, from 1965 to 1980, the four elementaries were built. And so one thing, I think we're at the point now where we look at, okay, are there other things that we can do to be more efficient and provide more opportunities for students? And looking at the picture there, I know everybody can't see that if they're online. I don't know if anybody is online right now, but the pictures there, you can actually see that around some tables. Now, we don't have those chairs anymore, but we do have new tables and chairs. Well, we, up to about a year ago, we had all those chairs from 62 years ago. Yeah, we still have a few, they're just not in this room right now. And I have one in my office, too, so it's really neat to have that. So but anyway, they were contemplating what to do when you have Chippewa, LaFountain, LaGrue, Lincolnville, Lynn Lawn, Noble Township, Rowan, Somerset, and Urbana. They were contemplating, and of course, then, like we said, 1962, 63 is the first school year for Southwood Junior Senior High School and Northwood Junior Senior High School. Seems like yesterday, but nobody was necessarily in school at that time here. But.
They watched it.
But you watched it. Yeah. So one thing we want to look at, too, is and part of the reason for all this discussion and discussion across the state of Indiana with other schools, too, is just student enrollment history. And I have to explain a little bit of this. So going back to 1962, 63, being 60 years ago, it's almost 60 years ago. It's sometimes difficult to find all the data, but we do have little booklets that shows some of those enrollments that we had back in 1976, 1977. And you can see the other dates, there's a date there that skipped also. You, from 1980 to 1981, cannot find that booklet, but there are other dates there. So there's a big gap from 1982 to 2015. 2015 is when I came to central office and then have a little bit more idea through our Skyward system or through other electronic means to find out what all those numbers were. So you can see the difference from 1979 to 1980. There were 1,004 students at Northfield and Southwood combined, 493 and 511. Always been pretty consistent with the same amount of numbers. And then presently, and when I say presently, this is like a week ago. So it could be up or down a little bit, probably up, but 509 students. So again, when you look at that, it looks pretty, like a huge drop from 81 to 2015. But you also notice that that's, there's a lot of years involved with that. And then you can kind of compare then, you go back and forth here, you can kind of compare that this is a graph that was provided. Actually, I was in a Kiwanis meeting that Grow Wauwish County actually presented, population loss in the county. And you can see it really parallels, you can see 1900 all the way to 2050 is what some projections are. But it kind of parallels the two different graphs. But that's not necessarily our concern as much as a concern of what our own enrollment is and how we can make things more efficient, provide more opportunities. Also notice, though, from 2010 to 2020, the last census, it actually, we lost 1,912 people in Wauwish County, according to the census. So going along with what has been projected. And this is just another graph that was provided by Wauwish County. Really breaks it down to kind of the same thing you saw before, but also breaks it down by age groups. And the number that's projected we lost in 2020 to 2050. And if you look at the 45 to 65 year age, that's the largest loss. Of course, when we're talking about large loss, unfortunately, those people probably aren't moving. Maybe some of them are going to be snowbirds to Florida, but other ones, I'd just be passing away. Say it that way, that's probably part of that scenario, I'm sure. Maybe they'll move quite quickly. But that age group, too, for the most part, 45 to 64, probably will not be bringing children to our schools. At that age, it would be yourself. So really, you know, 62 years after the creation of MSDWC, that's where we're at right now. We want to propel MSD of Wauwish County for the next 60 years and beyond, obviously. So strategic plan four is another way of looking at. So providing to be an additional opportunities for students, also facility improvements, maintenance and upgrades, and also building use efficiency. And you know, through a lot of things that Kuhn gives to us when we talk about budgets and when we talk about different things, we look at those numbers as far as the efficiencies that we're building and the capacities that are involved. And we do know that right now, the capacities of Southwood and Northfield, typically, they say we're about 80%. That means we're pretty full, but we are actually in the 50s at one of the schools and the 60s at the other school. And that hasn't changed for the last few years. So that's something that we have to look at. So it really comes down to some other things that we've looked at. So part of this history and strategic plan is just a reminder of all the things that we've done so far. So September 2018, we had Steve Yeager, the Yeager Educational Service Corporation that came in. If you recall, he went to all the different communities. He went to all the different schools, did a lot of work on just talking to people about some different ideas. The same thing is what we're looking at as far as what can we do to propel our school district for the next 60 years plus. A lot of great things happening, but we can't just be looking at today, we have to look in the future. And so 2018 to August of 2019, we had Nick Leroy from Right Minds Marketing. Of course, with open enrollment, we have to look at making sure that we are telling our story. Because if we don't tell our story, somebody else is going to tell the story for us. And so that's when we made some changes and have a lot of great things going along with that, too. And I think you would agree that, you know, with our hire and with all the things that are going on, it's been a good improvement, so appreciate that. Deb Lickleider, Dr. Deb Lickleider from Butler University, she has her own also business. Dr. Lickleider Associates basically came and helped us with those four strategic plans, those priorities. And so all of them really are going to be continual priorities that we've had. But those are some, but tonight, we're going to concentrate more on strategic plan number four. So just communication. One thing we went back and looked at, okay, what are all the things that we've done so far with the public? Just like this is a public, this is an open meeting, it's a work session. Since we only have one guest today, it's not a place where it's a question and answer, but it is a place that we can discuss and talk and do different things like that. Of course, that we know about tonight during this meeting. So April 17th, 2019, we had a school board work session, strategic planning. Two of you were not a part of that, but the rest of us were. And we actually were offsite. We did go to Heartland, I mean, Heartland RMC, to their conference room and had a very good meeting with Dr. Lickleider. December 3rd to the 19th, then we presented that to our building level staff. So we went to all the different schools and did a presentation. And then, if you recall, on the 17th and the 27th of February, we went and took that strategic plan presentation to Northfield and Southwood. And that was open to the public, basically going over all those priorities and other various situations. And then September 20th or 22nd, 2020, we had a school board work session like we are tonight, the strategic plan reviewed and updated. And part of that was looking at, you know, where we were as far as finding out about building facilities and different things like that. And if you recall, that was kind of during COVID area, too. We're still in the COVID, but it all started in March 13th of 2020. And so we waited a little bit longer and then we had that strategic, or that school board work session. And October 13th is when Dr. Kuhn brought in and we had Policy Analytics come in to look at some tax rates of AB. And then November 10th is when we actually had another school board work session, reviewed the strategic plan with Bartko Vilma. And then on January 28th of 2021, another school board work session, and that's with all of you then, to the two new board members. One thing I don't know that we put in here, and I thought we did, but I don't see it. We actually had a work session where we actually took a tour of all the buildings, too.
That's that one.
Tour buildings, sorry. Yep, there is tour buildings. I thought it was theirs. Okay, thank you. So anyway, that gives us a little idea of all the things. We've been talking about this a long time and a lot of things that have been going on the last two or three years. And so really, tonight, and this is where maybe more of the discussion. So there are studies for facility efficiencies. And really, there are different studies that we've already looked at. We've looked at the retaining of all schools and what that looks like, how much it would cost to get them to the point where they would be like new. The shuffling of grade levels over time to also reduce or phase into a four or three building corporation and then given a specific focus on the nine through 12 grade levels. Because as we know right now, and we've always talked about a lot of times, it's the nine through 12 is where our schools are not to capacity. And so looking at that. And then, of course, the one that we need, we haven't looked at a lot, but we need to do, and this is what we discussed, is to build a new high school. Build a nine through 12 high school to include phasing into a three building district over time while maintaining and improving certain buildings. So, you know, I want to look back, if we look at those board members, and I think maybe the superintendents were in some of those pictures, too, and maybe even some of the the school attorneys. But I'm sure when they were thinking about MSD of Wauwish County, they had all those schools and they were looking at what can we do to become more efficient. And I think we're at that time, too, is what we can do to be more efficient. We have a great school district, we have a lot of great things going on in all the buildings. But we always have to look to the future to see how we can keep that going and make it more efficient. And so really, that is our work session for tonight. So we can ask questions, we can talk. Wanted just to give you a little bit of an update, because these are some of the things that we've been talking about and thinking about. But we just haven't made any decisions, obviously. We're not going to make any decisions tonight, but we need to continue to study. And so I think that's a key word here, it's the studies for facility efficiencies. So as much as we can, we want to look at studying certain aspects of propelling our school district for the next 60 years. There really are no other slides, so I conclude with that part of it. And obviously, then we will, we'll go into our school board meeting at six o'clock. And then there'll be some recommendations. We have a, this is a very good agenda because, of course, we're looking at different things. But I think some great things with the teacher contract, the tentative agreement with the budget Dr. Kuhn's put together. And then, of course, a resolution that we're going to look at. And the resolution will go along with this, but here, again, it's just for a study because you have to follow different aspects of Indiana code to follow, looking at studying different facility efficiencies. It's almost time to talk for a second, so see if there's anything anybody wants to say before we conclude this part of our meeting. And no, there's not enough time for you guys to go back home and get in the fields and then come back at six o'clock. Not that far away. I want to reiterate, this isn't because we have financial problems, correct?
Correct.
No, this has nothing to do with that. Because some people will say that, but this has nothing to do with that. Because you guys have done a terrific job again, that's where we need to be.
Yeah, well, you're talking about, we're as strong as we've ever been.
Ever. Efficiencies, actually efficiencies provide even more opportunities. I think, you know, there are a lot of opportunities, but the more efficiencies that you have provide more opportunities. That's a good question, let's just talk about that. So, you know, financially, we are able to add programs, which we actually added another program in the high schools this year with computer science. We could add, financially, we could add more programs for other students. But again, it still comes down to that critical mass of if you add this, what will it take away from? And will we have any students in it? So we've talked about that quite a bit. We could add a lot of different things, but we would not have students to be able to be in those activities or in those classes or any of those types of things. So that's a very, very big question, because that is sometimes a question people ask. Well, is this because you want to save money? It's not about saving money, it's about being efficient with the money. Now, obviously, everybody.
And it's also, I would also say that it's also gives us an idea of how, better way of how we spend our money. So with a direction, with a plan, we can spend our better, we can spend our money, I don't want to say better, but we can spend it wisely.
Wisely.
Down the road. And Mike alluded to it. You know, 62 years ago, there was a vision put out for MSD. We just want to reevaluate that vision and see what we can do to propel us for the next 50, 60 years as MSD. And to do that, we're going to need to study some things and get a better idea of some of these impacts in the future.
And I know Tim talks about programming, too. It's like they're programming for our students, but because, and I'll probably just turn that over to you as far as how students are able or not able to do that because we have programming, but yet can you take advantage of that programming in certain situations that we have? So.
Yeah, our current programming is as robust as any area, but we offer courses that don't get put into the master schedule because there's just not enough kids to sign up for them. And so when that happens, then that reduces the number of sections we can offer in a class, which then kind of locks up other parts of the schedule. And again, it's not for lack of funding or lack of staffing, it's just lack of students. And so finding a way to get more students into those programs unlocks all kinds of opportunities. And so, yeah, and people often ask, well, just to increase our programming? Well, kind of to increase the programming, it's more just to increase the opportunity for students to take advantage of our programming that we currently are offering. So we will see growth, but it'll be more so allowing students to get to the classes that we offer now, but because of tight schedules, they just can't get to.
Tim, a couple of years ago, I guess it's been close to a couple of years, but we had as many as, I believe you said, 50 sections of different classes that met between the two schools and had less than 10 kids. But I know this year, it's still early, we have kind of an idea on, are we still pretty close for that?
You know, I haven't ran that report, so I would hate to guess, but we still have quite a few like that. And we work very hard and it's, in some ways, you might consider it financially unwise, right? Wasteful. We work hard to offer classes if there's only one or two students. We still do that. And so I don't know the exact number, but we still have that same philosophy.
Well, with the enrollments, with the enrollment that we have now, considering what you're talking about, Todd, I'm sure it has to be close to that, too. So and I will say, too, other school districts that, larger school districts, or I'm not going to say larger school district, but the students that have larger districts that have one high school, for example. You know, a lot of times, they say that if they don't have 12 students in the class. And I just, I talked to a chief academic officer, curriculum director, just a couple of years ago. They said 12 was the number. So they didn't have 12 in that class. So you think about that situation, you know, two years ago, three years ago, when we set 50 classes, that means in some schools, they'd say, you just lost 50 classes. Well, then what are you going to do? So, you know, we had to offer those classes. So, you know, more efficiently, more wisely as far as, you know, providing those opportunities.
Right, and I applaud our efforts. I mean, even if we have one or two people in that class, you know, to make that available to them, I think is important. But I also think it's important to look at that efficiency of, you know, is there a way that we can be more efficient in those resources? Not again, not necessarily for financial reasons, but for reasons of if we can make, as you said earlier, if we can make more sections go, then that frees up the schedule for somebody who says, well, I'd like to take that class, but I've got this requirement, my graduation requirement class that has to be this class, and so I can't take that elective that I would kind of like to take.
So, you know, we're talking about if we have two or three kids in a class. So, okay, if you've got two or three at Northfield, two or three at Southwood, you're still a six.
Correct.
Is that, is that a reality?
Oh, absolutely. There are, even in Chavilla schools, you're going to have classes of 10, of eight in some of those classes. And so we do, we try to make those go even at that. Yeah.
Are those like advanced classes or are those, is that AP classes?
They are generally AP classes, but they're also your special ed classes. We have students with needs that are at different buildings. And if they work together in one building, the programming and the opportunity to give them the proof. So it's at all levels, I would say, even at Chavilla or at Spottage.
Yeah, and no matter how many people you have going, the more specialized you get, the smaller the number will get, it'll be. I mean, I took a music theory class at Ball State that had seven people. So it's just a matter of how many people are interested in that class at that time.
So just, I mean, is there, are there classes that as the, that department, is there classes that you think that we would offer that we don't have?
Sure. I think the ones that come to mind are your top end classes. Like we currently offer a calculus AB, which is like calculus one. And we have probably 10 students, north and south in those. It would be nice to offer calculus, too. And that, you're talking five or six kids, right, that want to do that. But that, there would be one example. Our fine arts, music and band, we've kind of gotten very tight with that because of the schedule, right? Like the band teacher has to cover this and do this and do that. Well, if we had enough band kids, we can hire a separate person to do band require. Or open up a schedule for them to offer more band electives. Drama, we share a drama program, north to south. Computer science, we were able to create an entirely new position for that, but we have our drive north to south for those things, and things Gary Dale and industrial arts. And so all of those things, as you create flexibility, that opens up all kinds of opportunities. And some of those are ones we couldn't even predict right now. It just depends on teacher and student interest. We can really, I feel like most of the public can feel it with athletics, right? Like we can't field a scene team or we can't field whatever. And all of a sudden, then it's like, oh, what kind of implications that has on the bar stool? Same things happen with classes. When you can't field this class, then that kind of locks up all of these other things because you have to get this one class in, which then impacts all of us, right? Not just AP, but that teacher also teaches general classes and they have to cover this prep period or they cover this much. And so we just are, we're lean, we're lean and tight, which is great financially. And so it's exciting to have ideas to maybe explore ways to give us just a little bit more breathing for our teachers and our students and that schedule.
It's been efficiencies, even though the two teachers that we have that travel, not the best use of efficiency when they travel, because then they lose a period that we could have them do something else and teach another class. And so that's one of the geographical challenges that we have, too. Because it's great to share and to be able to do that, but yet you are losing some teaching time because of travel.
I guess I would add, too, as a curriculum guy, everybody always wants to promote the academics of it. I think there's a lot of value from our athletic program, from our band program, from our industrial. Like all of those programs help build kids. And that's what we're in the business of. And so I hope, I hope we don't, it's not solely for the academics. And it's for raising good kids, good, well-rounded kids that can participate in sports and participate in their interests. And the more opportunities we give them, the more chances we are to connect with a kid and help them succeed. That's really, I feel like, that's where our heart is.
So what would the class size be, your estimate? Well, right now, just to give you an example, we had 134 students. I guess that maybe give you a little example, like last year, we had 134 students graduated from Northfield to Southwood. Yeah. And I know that I've, it's been a long time since I've been in school, but I had 130 that graduated in my class. And so we're really very close to the classes, the part of it. And that was kind of a larger class. I mean, you could, we went back to the one slide and you could see like back the year that had 1,000 students. I mean, that was a large, obviously large classes there. They weren't always like that, but still, that's, it's not very large. And even compared to schools around us, of course, there's a lot of schools that have a lot more students than that. Even the eight that we, if I think about those, you guys could probably help me a little bit, too, be very comparable to, you know, Manchester, Wauwish, McConacaw, Peru, Okeechobee. Not Huntington, obviously.
Okeechobee's class are getting bigger, probably more Wauwish, Manchester.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. Oh, actually higher than that. So they were capping at that 30 a class. And since I was there, they're using the same schedule while they just changed it. But for about 14 years, they used that same schedule, but they were having 50, I mean, 30 students in each section of each core class, so that's 150 students. So they were having 150 in each class for the most part. So they're, they probably average 130 to 150 right now. So and then, of course, North Miami, you know, smaller. North Miami is comparable to one of our schools, to Northwood, Southwood separately right now. Eastbrook, maybe a little smaller than that, but about the same also. So really, our neighboring schools that we touch are about the same as our Northwood and Southwood high schools combined right now.
So you ever take 125 to 150-ish?
And really, our largest class right now is that seventh grade at Northfield, with 90 students. And so, but then, but then we also have, I'm doing this off memory, but we do have a couple of classes still in the 50s. One, and I think our senior class right now at Southwood is only 50 students. So if you double that, that's only 100. Now, that's a small, small class within the, or throughout the corporation. But there's another one that's 50. And, but you have 125 to 150, but typically, probably right around 130 is going to be where that will be over the next several years. I'd love to know what some of those guys were thinking, too. What their discussions were. Wonder if we could go back on Facebook Live or YouTube. Well, if there's nothing else, we can close this meeting and be prepared for the next one, but we can still talk.
Chris, our long-term debt goes completely off in 2023, Chris. And we've done that by choice, though, too. We couldn't, we could have had it off before now, but we've made strategic spending decisions.
Yeah, to keep up with.
On Northfield and Southwood.
To keep up with some of our maintenance and upgrades on our facilities. We extended that debt by small chunks, just to be able to.
We've always, well, lately, we've short-term those length of debt so that we were in a position, we debt-free, but we could have been debt-free a year to go, 111. But we chose to keep improving Northwood and Southwood as the leading schools.
Right, right. There are bigger facilities.
And especially Southwood being kind of the anchor in the southern part. And especially Southwood being kind of the anchor in the southern, southern part of the county and district.
Obviously, we're continuing to do that. We just finished up the roof at Southwood and then moved over to Northfield, so continuing to work on that. Which is mostly what this last bomb was for, was for those roof repairs.
Any other questions or comments, or?
Kevin definitely touches on an important part of it, like it's not just the academic side of it, but it's also the financial investment and the future looking forward. The best way to spend money for the next fifty years is worth, as far as buildings and roofs and search.
And the projected assessed valuation is projected to go up, even though that, you can look at that in two different lights. Favorably, but also it's ultimately it's net tax bill, property tax bill. It's always encouraging to be in a growth assessed valuation.
Then decline.
Then definitely a decline.
That's.
We should reiterate though, that when that, that gain or increase happens, we don't set profit for that. That's not our deal. Just a reminder.
I think we'll continue to gather information and continue to report back through some of these sessions and meetings.
And sometimes we think it's, we spent maybe too much time doing all this study, but it's a very, very important decision. So we're going to take our time, do it right, study and the different information. It's, it's great to know though too, that, you know, we always want to encourage people that when we do have these different meetings and, and public presentations that they, they come and share. Obviously, we have open doors here at central office and, and the buildings too, to ask questions, want to come down to it, so.
As sidebar in all this, is to hear in the news about COVID and so forth, that there's been just a decline in public student numbers due to some of the feelings about all of that. I just wonder if that'll come back or if public education is still going to be competitive against more private education or home education. And so it's, it's a tough call for the future.
It is.
You, you, you have to do something that puts yourself in a position that attracts everything that you can possibly do.
True, but we've been fortunate here though, I feel like we've not been as impacted as maybe other areas in the state with all of that. But it's still a, a market that we need to do better at.
And become more efficient so that if that trend does continue, then we can do more with fewer students.
Well, it, it's become such a consumer, somewhat a consumer environment. It's, it's so you and I decide where we're going to go get our groceries. So, you know, why go here versus here?
Many choices now.
Certainly since it's from other school districts that are finding ways to market what they have, or what they can provide. So it's, we're going to hear at the competition even though it's COVID.
And our staff has done a great job, knowing that, you know, we didn't, we weren't trained necessarily as educators to look at marketing and doing all those things, but we've really, I think, turned a lot of corners to make sure that that's what we're doing. And, and making sure and even stepping up games, things like that. I think we've always have done that. But I think we kind of look internally a little bit more to say, what can we do to, to do better jobs and with that? So there's a lot of things that you can do. But you have to have that in your mind too, to know, okay, what can we do to help in making sure that we provide the best opportunities for our students and the best education that we can, so. All right, well, we will close this meeting.
Yeah, right. See you at six?
Same bad time.